I live in District C, so I figured I'd be here.
Here to, uh...
Well, you have to say...
Make sure they...
I have to go?
Make sure they...
But if I come up and see Jason, do I have the right knife? He's that intense, so... I'm so happy with this. Yeah, there's always something.
Always something.
I'm so happy with this. It's so pretty, and it's so...
Yeah.
It looks like it belongs here.
Well, yeah, it looks like it was installed when, you know, all this...
Yeah, it doesn't... You can't tell that I complained for so long that nobody could get up here that they finally...
Yeah, they did it with the hand company, Jason mentioned it to me, but that's all they do is woodwork.
Yeah, it's beautiful. Now I just have to figure out the, uh... The one I'm working on. Because we need one in here, just the one we had that was temporary, it was far, and I don't want...
It's a big metal one?
Yes. Oh, my God.
And noisy?
They were so excited, they called me, "You have to come look back, our ramp is..." So I came and I was like, "Oh, yeah."
Yeah. Are you... What is, like, your position right now?
Um, the inclusion chair.
Ah.
Yes, I'm the one who bitches about things like, they create things that don't have enough contrast. And, um, you know, they have, like, two years ago, I knew before, they had this lovely thing where you could kind of...
One of the candidates is stuck in traffic.
Okay.
So I spoke with Abby.
Okay.
Yeah, it's all her issues. Um, you might want to delay the straight... Yeah, no, it's why she's doing something now.
I'm sure you can't wait.
You're getting us...
Uh, I'm connected right here.
You wanna extend, or... Do I have to start again? Has it started already?
Uh, yes, I started.
Can you stop it?
Yeah, nevermind, I'll stop. Because it's already connected, I swear.
Oh. Sorry, that's kind of creepy story. So Jennifer, you ended up embroidering a T-shirt for Jeffrey, my son Jeffrey.
Uh-huh.
You're good Thanksgiving, so you're bringing that. And he was wearing it, and she tells me, "I saw him on the livestream, look great." Like, I thought that was creepy.
Because the problem is, if you put it on the livestream, it's already started.
Yeah, it looks like we... We say, you know, we'll start in a minute.
I posted that on there.
Yeah, can I still... This is what we ask for, you know? Have slideshows.
Yeah.
Secure this.
Okay, now, you can see we have other those in play.
Well, it's extremely zoomed in, too, sure.
Okay. Oh, yeah, so she tells me, she goes, "He probably smells nice." Nice, it's a check, you know, shaking, shaking, just like, oh, that's... Do you not know it's livestream? And he said, I said, you know, we could watch on Friday night, and he's like, "Oh, look at my mom." Why would I go there, my wife? You know, there's a lot of... Yeah.
Maybe.
Oh, yes. Yeah. She's...
Yeah.
So, you're seeing...
And now I just call them.
Yeah.
They're all there. Or, a little over there, a little bit outside. But, uh, they did, I could wrap it in some, uh, jolly.
Oh, yes.
So, like, yeah. Oh, you know, I, uh, so my mom's, uh, interesting, okay. But he better talk a little about how he's been. Oh, yes. Yeah. The...
Well, I see you.
You...
You're very much so cute.
And I hope I use it, ever use it, ever. He's so...
So... Yeah.
So, I just got a day or four. It's rather...
We gave it a lot of things, we gave it a lot of...
Um, we took, like, to have a call that we could have, we could have... Awesome. Yeah. 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 So, now, we should now, right? Yeah. Get to a term of these things. Yeah.
So, yeah, a lot of the more, probably, the culture of, of the place, and, uh...
Yeah.
A lot of things, yeah. So, I think, yeah. 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 That's mine. So, I'm... Yeah. So, I'm not... I'm trying to... All my... I'm a softy, I'm a... Yeah.
Uh, yes.
Is this what we show, you...
Yes.
Okay. I'm here.
Hi.
She feels too quiet. The way I know she's never been too quiet.
Shelly, no way.
Pleasure. Uh, put your mic up here.
Okay.
Shelly, I know what you're saying, we don't even hug, but, you know...
I think I might do good. Great. Good. Thank you. Do you know if you want to sound chat? You're on the inside. Now, will it affect the, if I...
Can I move this over, or...
Yeah. Is that working?
We turn around, lift the troops down, it's coming.
Okay, so, we can check anything?
I don't know.
All right.
You'll adjust your... Yeah.
Yeah.
Like a nice crowd up here.
Paul, you sit up here. Or, say, you sit up.
So...
Did you move the... Did you move the side, because I looked at somebody, and you can come back and help. Or, yeah. Thanks.
Just a quick warning, uh, we love school, uh, off, it's thirty-four hour, that's a student, it's gotta prepare, man. Don't forget, uh, or else, gonna get...
Okay, thanks, man.
No, no problem.
So, I mean, it's... There's three girls on it.
Uh, you have to jump on your hips.
Yeah, yeah. Fast, you're...
Scotty, it's for the watering, that you just...
Yeah.
Well, that's really...
There's nothing, hard to... If we can drag all the... Right.
Are you walking around here?
Am I... They haven't turned me up yet.
I have not, I'm probably... And you're up in here.
I can still mumble.
I can get water. Thank you.
So, um, I guess you're... Right. I'm actually, it was a count, then. He's...
It's a circle charge, right?
It's all... I'm spying on it.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure... It's not awesome, it's...
Did you ask? Exactly.
I like that.
I was...
Okay.
We have a lot more, so...
Okay, I think it's time for us to get going here, so we will get to go home tonight. Uh, first off, I'd like to acknowledge a few, uh, some thanks of several and several people I won't acknowledge that I, uh, are here that have helped to put, individually, put this together. But, uh, very much thank the congregation, Emmanuel, uh, for the venue here tonight. Beautiful place, I haven't been here, and it's kind of like a jewel sitting here that, uh, you don't really quite see how the depth of it as you drive by. So, thank, thank you very much, uh, those of you, a few of you are members here. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you. Uh, and I, I want to thank our candidates, I'm falling off my schedule here, but I want to thank you, honored to have you here tonight. Uh, glad to see you both are in a runoff. Not that I wanted to see a runoff, but I'm glad you are the two that are in the runoff. Uh, so, um...
Glad to.
Yeah, honored, honored to have two, two very viable and suitable candidates in the runoff. Very, very unusual here in Houston. Uh, I didn't... Sorry, David. Some of them just have one. Uh, I also like to thank those who put together the, um, the, our goodies, our cookies, and, uh, outside. Martha Turner at that Sotheby's. Uh, I believe that Sotheby's International, if I'm...
Catherine Warren.
Catherine, Catherine Warren with, thank you, thank you Cathy. I can't read. Uh, and I want to acknowledge, uh, the city councilman, David Robinson, who is sitting near the back row. Uh, David, good to see you. Um, ask that we all turn off our cell phones, so that, uh, we'll, we'll have an uninterrupted, uh, forum here tonight, and we won't be waiting for someone to answer than be listening in for, for what they have to say. I, I, I will be emceeing along with, uh, uh, the, I'm the president, Greg Legrand, of, um, the Near Town Association, which is Near Town Montrose Super Neighbourhood. And, uh, I will be co-chairing, we will switch off asking questions, uh, with, uh, um, Eric Erickson, sorry, Eric. And first, uh, I'd just like to go through kind of the format that we have put together. Uh, the format will have, uh, three major components. There will be an opening statement, uh, the candidates will be allowed to have. There'll be a group of five primary topics that we will go over. Uh, those are infrastructure and flood mitigation, neighbourhood protection, transit mobility, policing and security, and city financing. And, uh, at the end of that, we'll have a closing statement for, statement for the candidates. In addition, they will be around here, hopefully, for a while, to ask a few questions. Uh, there will be no questions during the meeting. Uh, the questions, uh, will be answered with a, a time limit, there'll be one to two minutes per question. And, um, if there are anything, anything, items that I forgot, I'm sure Eric will fill in for me here. So, uh, Eric, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to you.
Just wanted to, uh... Well, why don't we start then? And, again, my name's Eric Erickson, I'm the president of the University Place Association, which is the, includes the area you're in right now. Uh, why don't we just get started, since we, uh, wanna be respectful, everyone's time? And, uh, Abby, why don't you start, and with your first introduction and summary, and whatever else you'd like to tell us about yourself?
So, can everyone hear us? Is the mic on? Great. So first off, thank you all for taking the time to come out and get to know us a little better. I know in the first round, it was really hard with thirteen candidates to, uh, really hear us. So, again, I'm Abby Kamen, it's an honor to be here. I think our first candidate forum was at Congregation Emmanuel, and now this is our last forum of the campaign, so full circle. I'm a fourth generation District C resident, and I love our city. I believe that every resident in every neighbourhood deserves access to quality city services that we're already paying for and that we deserve. I am a delegate to my super neighbourhood, I have served at the state legislature. I was the associate regional director of the Anti-Defamation League, among other things. I believe that we need council members that know how to work within government and with other levels of government to get the resources that we need. And, do we have a timer issue? I'll keep going until they tell me to stop. But, the, the bottom line is, I will fight for each and every one of us, and this district and this city are at a critical juncture. Whether it's our streets, and not just our streets and drainage, but our sidewalks, our trash pickup, or the fact that people don't really know what's going on at the city. I believe it's our council member's job to communicate with our residents, so that we can hold government accountable, and that we provide a voice for our residents at City Hall. That's something I intend to do, and I would be honored and proud to serve you in that capacity.
Thank you. Shelly?
Well, hi, I'm Shelly Giddings. And I'm very excited to be here today, I'm glad all of this large group showed up to hear me speak again. And, uh, I've, I've been running a very grassroots campaign, and that's pretty much how I've run my life, with, uh, working in the, with all the different, uh, nonprofits and foundations. But one of the things that, uh, with this one saying grassroots, that also includes that how, where I get my funds. I haven't received any funds from any lobbyists, or any, I didn't rece... Which, which was kind of hard, when you see a check with three zeros on it, you'd have to give it back. But, uh, I haven't taken any money also for any, any, any organizations that do business with the city. So when I get to the city, I'm, I'm not running, it's not a stepping stone for me, I'm running just to work for you and to serve the city. And I won't be bought and sold, I'll be there to be able to use my voice. And this is as far as I want to go, at, at City Council, and I hope I'll be there for the next eight years, serving you. Uh, one of the things that I really want to talk about is, I just want to go back to the basics and make sure that your, all the services work for you, your trash is picked up. Uh, our, our District C is made of incredible neighbourhoods, and that's what I want to work with, the neighbourhoods. Whether it be super neighbourhood, uh, leaders, or just someone that lives in the neighbourhood. So, so many towns we have been, because of the way CIP, uh, just the funding is, just the little problems in each neighbourhood has been overlooked. I have a plan that will help raise money to help fund all the CI plans and help the things that you've been wanting to have done in your neighbourhood happen. I'm a problem solver, I get things done.
All right, well, thank you very much. All right, now we'll go on to our topics. Um, and I think the first three questions, you're gonna have a couple of minutes, and I'm sure we'll have our time in working. And, and if not, we'll just sort of play it like...
It's not just fail.
We'll, 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 we'll try to be fair to both of you. It's a lot easier with just two instead of eight or twelve or something. So, anyway, so the first question, it's, it's really about, um, about, uh, you know, infrastructure and flood mitigation, are these, these next questions. So, to state the obvious, geography and changing climate make Houston susceptible to recurring natural disasters such as...
Okay. One of the things I'd like to do is like have the city do a 2D and 3D map over where, how the water has flooded, where it's flooded. And that way we can, like, all the barriers, whether it be a railroad track, whether it be highways, roads, whatever it's stopped, whatever has worked as a dam in the past and put water in the neighborhoods, I think we will be able to look at that if we have that study and go from there. For the first time, since I've owned about any of this flooding and tried to work with the city, they are willing to work with the railroads. Because usually the railroads say, that's our property, we can't do anything for you. But now they're willing to go after the railroads and help, get them to help work with some of the flooding. Because a lot of the flooding, that was the dam where it hit and flooded the neighborhoods.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, Abby?
Yeah, so first and foremost, we should say what's happening, which is overdevelopment and the impacts of climate change. And we need to deal with both of those realities. There's two issues at hand. First, how we as a city help residents recover who have already been impacted and how we deal with the long-term effects of it. In terms of some of the proposals, and please go to my website, I do have a consistent plan there. We need to bring back the Drainage and Flood Committee on City Council to look at a lot of things. We also need to make sure that residents have access to recovery funds and things of that nature and address neighborhood-specific flooding hotspots. What happened in the medical center, they have flood barriers and floodgates and they also moved all the electrical systems to the second floor. For residential housing, that doesn't make a lot of sense. But one thing that has happened in the medical center is the use of live, almost GPS sensors to predict when bayous are going to overflow. We can bring those into residential areas and make sure that in our streets as well, we have live flood gauge warnings. Okay, still have time, sorry. We're both looking at a weird format, so I apologize.
You're good.
In terms of the building code, because that was one of the questions, I supported the Chapter 19 changes at the city level. I do recognize that we need to continue to modify those to make sure they're working for current homeowners, but we do need to be making changes in the way that we build at the city. And we cannot wait for new floodplain maps. Those are years out. We need action now, we need to take care of families now.
Okay, excellent. Now, next question, all right. Again, to state something we all are probably aware of, more than two years after Hurricane Harvey, thousands of Houstonians are still struggling to get back to their homes after being displaced by flooding. Federal funds have been tied up in a flawed system and have helped very few. So the question is, what would you do to address the logjam in the Recovery Houston program and get people back to their homes? And Abby, why don't you start?
So I'm born and raised in Houston, but my first day of college in New Orleans was evacuation day during Hurricane Katrina. So I am not unfamiliar with these issues and it's not just Harvey, it's Memorial Day, it's Tax Day, it's Emelda, and the list goes on. One of the issues that the city has faced is getting the recovery program off the ground. I want to recognize that that has not worked for a lot of people. At the same time, we need to recognize the logjam that has been created in the bureaucratic red tape. So Congress delayed with the appropriation of dollars. HUD, that's just the bell. HUD, only two months ago, even though the city is starting to get those funds, the city couldn't actually spend those funds without instructions from HUD on how to use that money. That didn't come down until two months ago. That is completely unacceptable. And with now the state also controlling other local funds, the more levels of government that it passes through, they're skimming those funds off the top. We need to be advocating loudly and strongly to get the resources we need now.
Okay, all right. Shelley?
Well, I'm going to say from the very beginning that we need to have a comprehensive flood plan that integrates with the county. And we don't have that and we need to start like all the way from mitigation to recovery. There are like four buckets for FEMA and one is for the city, their libraries, buildings, one's for HUD housing, another one's for infrastructure, and then the last one is for if your house flooded. And so I think there's like 150 million left there, but the city had hired two contractors to kind of get that money out and they really have not served the city very well. So one of the things that we'll need to do is try to, as a city council member, that will be our job, to go in and really try to get that money back to the people.
Okay, we're just moving along here. Okay, last two-minute question for now, and this one's a little closer to home, at least for folks in this neighborhood. "District C is home to many of Houston's world-class institutions, go Rice, yet investment in its century-old infrastructure continues to be postponed. What will you do to correct the short-sighted planning and ensure District C receives its fair share of capital project funding?" Shelley?
Well, one of the first things that I will do is to try to make sure that we go through where we really need the funding and produce the data. Because when you are asking for CIP funds, the best way to get them is have a fact-based request. And the number of CIP projects that are underfunded, I kind of mentioned it in my opening speech, you know, we'll work with the TERS and the management districts to also expand the money. So if we just go and ask, this is what we need over here, they'll say there's not enough money. But when we bring in all these different associations and then go out and get more funding, and I plan on having a grant writer on my staff, I'm shocked that we don't have a grant writing department at the city, because we have so many federal dollars that are left there and used with HCAT and the TERS. We have a great thing happening right on Shepherd, TERS 5 has 25 million put in and they used 25 million from a grant. So that's how you get things done.
Okay, thank you.
So, one thing to recognize with the CIP is, and does everyone know what the CIP is? Capital Improvement Project. So it's our infrastructure, it's certain projects that the city is funding. All of that was put on hold because of Harvey, because the city had to pay upfront for recovery efforts and wait for the federal reimbursement. So for two years, we have not had capital improvement projects around the city. Now those are picking up and we need to advocate for more projects in District C, specifically, for example, right at the intersection of Sunset and Rice. We have had an issue there for years and years. I can't think of a more perfect example where all of the entities, whether it's the congregation, the church, Rice University, and the super neighborhood and civic clubs all agree, we need to deal with that intersection. We need to be dealing with crosswalks and safety. So those are some of the things that we're looking at, the real application of how we get projects into the CIP so that we can have a more safe and workable environment in our neighborhoods.
Okay, thanks. All right, now, if I can get my, there we go. These are going to be one minute, although I have to say you ladies are doing really good. You're not even using up your two minutes. We're just moving right along here. Okay, so the next one, it really, it builds on that last question. "Are the investments being made through Rebuild Houston sufficient to meet the city's needs? If not, what more is needed to be done and how do we fund it?" And Abby, you go first.
So I support Build Houston Forward. It's a pay-as-you-go dedicated funding stream specifically for streets and drainage. And as we continue to pay the debt down in that account, there are going to be more funds available for us to utilize for neighborhood programs. I would like to see those funds used not just for major thoroughfare reconstruction like we're seeing on Greenbrier, but neighborhood-specific flooding hotspots, those corners that always, where water sits, where drainage doesn't work. And I would like to see some of that money not just going to streets and drainage, but as we reconstruct, sidewalks being a priority as well. In addition to Build Houston Forward, one of the things is partnering with our TERS and our management districts. There are always ways that we can work on accessibility for residents when it comes to the TERS, but that is one of the only ways we are getting necessary infrastructure funding right now.
Excellent. 59 seconds, really great. We're adding a little humor to this.
I like the ring.
There we go, it's finally working.
It worked for the first time quickly that time.
Shelley, go ahead.
We're seeing all kinds of stuff up your phone. Well, I'm really glad that we are, we've had passed through the city where we know that the drainage fee is going to be used for drainage and that's important. And we have all these bonds that we're trying to pay off and as they go down, as Abby explained, we are, we are getting, we'll have more money for infrastructure. But one of the things that I'm really pushing is through HCAT, that's where our NGO, where we get all our big dollars, federal dollars. We need to go back and put our, we're asking for funding there, go in with the county, the city, metro for these large infrastructure projects that are in C. And we'll walk out with, you know, a big, a lot of many millions. We're leaving like 890 millions currently was left there through the last giving cycle. And TaxDOT received the biggest bucket of money. And so I really want us to work together, that's what my specialty is, writing proposals and lobbying.
Thank you. All right, next question, something dear, near and dear to our cars. "Potholes are being repaired more quickly than they were 10 years ago, but the quality of repairs appears to be poor and holds up only for a few months often. What will you do to ensure that potholes get repaired not only quickly but well?" And Shelley?
Well, I think that we really need to know what potholes have been repaired 10 times because you know that, we don't really need to use the cold, the cold method. There's all different types of methods for repairing potholes and the one that they call in repair the next day, that's with the cold type patchwork and so it doesn't last. Especially if it's like for trucks or going over there, heavy trucks or it's a high traffic area. So what I'd like to do is be able to have on my website, okay, you reported this pothole, but if you, you've reported it, you know, every six months. So we're going to do it the correct way, use the right materials, but it's going to take longer. It may take three to five days instead of one day. And that's one of the answers. The other answer is, let's rebuild these streets correctly.
Okay. Abby?
Yeah, so the mayor, I believe, did fulfill on his promise to fill the potholes, but we're now talking about is, it doesn't last. And there are streets I know not to go down in our district because my car's not making it out alive. We need to tackle the issue head-on. We're already tracking through neighborhood office hours and on our pet peeves page where a lot of those issues are and we need to continue to work with the departments of the city that know where these trouble spots are, but we also need to look at where to get funding. And one of the things that I've proposed is we as city taxpayers also pay county taxes. I want to see a disparity study done because I believe that we unfairly subsidize suburban growth. Our county taxpayer dollars need to be spent in our city, on our streets, in our neighborhoods so that we can get the job done and do it well.
Okay, last question in this group of infrastructure questions. "Every major thoroughfare and freeway in the city seems to be under construction at the same time." Maybe that's a slight exaggeration, but what will you do to ensure better planning and coordination for major road construction projects?" And Abby, go ahead.
So whether it's 610 and 59 being shut down at the same time and no one knows about it, or the fact that Project Braise, they're now proposing closing two bridges at the same time and bringing Braze Wood down to one lane, none of that makes sense. I want to know if it happens in the district, whether it's in our jurisdiction or not. I want to know what's happening and I want to work with TaxDOT, with the County Flood Control District and other entities to make sure that it is making sense. And sometimes it's not going to make sense and it's out of the city's control. Let's be practical about that. I want to make sure if that is the case, it's my responsibility as a district council member to let you know what's happening around us and getting that information out so we aren't sitting in that traffic.
Thank you. Shelley?
Well, I'll be happy if the city decides to stop letting TaxDOT control us. And that'll take a lot of political will, but I think we're getting to that point. I would just like to mandate some type of perpetual CIP planning where if you repaired Kirby last year, we'll know in 30 years it'll be back on the CIP plan. And one of the things, the mayor did come up with a task force recently with Kinder that will work with, so you won't have two, you know, everything going at the same time, roads all being repaired at the same time. In Montrose, we had, they wanted to repair both bridges at the same time, but they were able to help and they only repaired once, one at a time. So I know over on Braze Wood, I think they're having that happen right now where they're wanting to close down both lanes, they might need to call that task force to get them out here.
Okay, well, thanks. Now, I'm going to step down and...
That's my announcement that I'm now here.
You never write.
I'm going to go through the series of questions, some one minute, some two, hopefully I'll advise you before the timer, you see the timer. But dealing with neighborhood protection, and these kind of vary along the lines there, but I'm going to start off with the very first question here, that District C is home to many of the city's historic districts and deed-restricted neighborhoods. And I, this is not on my script, but there is a feeling amongst us in those areas that they are under attack. The city has stopped enforcing recently deed restrictions. They're permitting people to build where they never have in the past and there seems to be some issues going on with the historic districts, their approval of some of the items and disapproval, that they are taking it away from the city, the city is refusing to be, make decisions at times and they're trying to push it into their court system. And I'd like the city to step up and, you know, do the work that they've been doing and protect, you know, some of the assets that they have. And District C is one of those major holders of those assets. So the question is, what ordinances or policies will you champion to protect deed restrictions and the integrity of Houston's historic neighborhoods? Two-minute questions, and Shelley, you are first.
Okay, I'll start off with the historic neighborhoods. That should be covered under Chapter 33 and, you know, I think a while back we had quite a few preservation officers and this big staff and now we're down to one. And I would recommend that we have more people that can help with that. And also, as it goes through the council, it should go through appellate board and then go to city council, and I'm not sure on that appellate board if there's, they're having some more developers input. And so I'd like for it to stay, go back to the way it was where we can, at the city level, really be able to do something about it. And as far as with deed restrictions, we've heard that all over, that the city is not willing to get involved in that. Well, we need to be involved in that. And that's something that I would definitely work on. Our neighborhood, I'd like to have seen more employees with our neighborhood because I think they're down just a few and they have no enforcement power, Department of Neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you, Shelley. And Abby?
Yeah, and so Greg, thank you for raising the issue. We've talked about this before. The city attorney's office, we need to be making sure that the city attorney is enforcing deed restrictions and not reinterpreting them at their discretion. We also need a searchable database of deed restrictions, including when they expire, so that neighborhoods, including super neighborhoods, have time to go around...
That should be covered under Chapter 33, and, you know, I think a while back we had quite a few preservation officers and this big staff, and now we're down to one. And I would, I'd recommend that we have more people that can help with that. And also, as it goes through the council, it should go through appellate board and then go to city council, and I'm not sure on that appellate board if there's, they're having some more developers input. And so I'd like for it to stay, go back to the way it was where we can, at the city level, really be able to do something about it. As far as with deed restrictions, we've heard that all over that the city is not willing to get involved in that. Well, they, we need to be involved in that. And that's, that's something that I would definitely work on. Where our neighborhood, I'd like to have seen more employees with our neighborhood because they, I think they're down just a few and they have no enforcement power, Department of Neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Shelley. And Abby?
Yeah, and so Greg, thank you for raising the issue. We've talked about this before. The city attorney's office, we need to be making sure that the city attorney is enforcing deed restrictions and not reinterpreting them at their discretion. We also need a searchable database of deed restrictions, including when they expire, so that neighborhoods, including super neighborhoods, have time to go around, mobilize, and re-up those restrictions and land use restrictions. We also need to make sure that public works in the department is actually looking at, because right now they don't really look at it, whether a neighborhood has deed restrictions or not. So we have departments that aren't communicating with one another. In terms of guarding against variance abuse, one of the things that I have proposed is, as soon as a variance or replat is applied for, I want our office to be notified, and it will be my responsibility to communicate with the super neighborhood and the civic clubs so that we have more time as neighbors to look at it and determine whether or not we have an issue with it.
Okay. Abby, thank you very much. Next questions will be of two, two minutes in, in time. The past ten years have seen a significant increase in the number of large-scale apartment and high-rise residential projects that target upper-income occupants and result in the loss of affordable housing to the overall detriment of District C. What actions do you propose to address this imbalance? In your answer, please, please share your perspective on the issue of gentrification and housing affordability, cost of living, especially in the poorer minority neighborhoods. Abby?
So, again, I, I think the last time we were here, I gave a special shout-out to the Stop Ashby mobilization, and we need to see more of that, not just in this neighborhood, but around the city where voices are lifted up and heard. Now, that fight isn't over yet, and we need to remember that as well. In terms of affordable housing, we need to focus on it, period. It needs to not only be affordable, but also built of sound quality. That's something that we need to look at, and I really love the model that the Houston Land Trust is now moving towards to keep certain houses and residential areas affordable for those in pretty much perpetuity. So that's, I think, a model that we need to continue to look at.
Thank you, Abby. Shelley?
Well, I'd like to, you know, encourage the city to pursue developments, it's like the Mueller development that's in Austin. And what that is, it's designed where each group of apartments, they have a number of affordable housing units. And also, like, if you buy a house that's been on subsidized land, or some, out the house was subsidized, and you don't get to sell it a few years later and make three-hundred thousand, I mean, that rent is, you know, it's, you can't make that kind of money. I mean, that's one of the things that's happening here, what's happened with a lot of our subsidized land. And recently, well, it's not that recent, but with the Parkway, Allen Parkway Village, the federal government had to come in and stop the city from doing away with it. We almost lost that, that was a complete city hood housing unit. You know, we, we sold the land where Jeff Davis was for twenty million dollars to help balance our budget. That would've been a great place for affordable housing. We're, we have what's called, I have another minute, we have what's called a brain drain in Houston because of, we have all these great universities, but we don't have affordable housing for people to stay. So they, they have these great, their minds are wonderful, but they decide to leave and go to places like San Francisco, or, or Boston, or Chicago, where we have better transportation and, and they have affordable housing. So I think affordable housing is a big issue for us, and we need to really work with that because we haven't done so well with the gentrification of, of making a balance in our, our wonderful neighborhoods.
Thank you, Shelley. The next question will be for one-minute answers. How can neighborhoods be protected from the negative impacts of increasing density, out-of-scale development, increased traffic, townhome projects with undersized driveways, unsightly utilities, loss of water pressure, et cetera, and so on? One-minute questions, and Shelley, you are first.
Well, one of the things that I'd like to do once elected is, you know, have these meetings where you would learn how to use minimum lot size in your neighborhoods. It won't, you can't use it in every neighborhood, but most neighborhoods you can, and it's not that hard to apply and have, and once you have that, once you have minimum lot-size requirements, within, your builders can't come in and put six houses on one lot. And it goes back just to the deed restrictions. We, the city has to take control of deed restrictions again and start helping to enforce them.
Thanks, Shelley. Abby?
Yeah, I, I think what we're seeing is that through variances and other things, deed restrictions and land use restrictions aren't being protected. We need to make sure that development, while we are moving towards density as a city, that current development doesn't, excuse me, development doesn't happen on the backs of current residents. We've seen loss of water pressure. We need to make sure that developer impact fees are high enough and being reinvested in the areas where the impact is actually occurring. In terms of, we've already talked about how we want to, I want to notify our super neighborhoods and our civic clubs when a variance or something is applied for. The other thing I want to do is meet at least once every other month, but depending on what works for the super neighborhoods, on what they're hearing and seeing around the neighborhood, just as a District C community, rather than as a whole. We have what's called the Super Neighborhood Alliance, and I'm happy to answer questions on that afterwards because I'm running out of time. But we need to be more involved in the neighborhoods themselves.
Thank you, Abby. Next questions are one-minute answers. Many cities around the country have developed stricter regulations for Airbnb-type rentals. Will you support amendments to Houston's hotel motel ordinance to better regulate Airbnbs in Houston? Abby?
So, yes, I'd want to see specific language before I said absolutely, but I do want to give credit to University Place Association for the work that they're already doing on this. I think it's really important, and I can't take the credit for that. As it relates to house parties, that is something that neighborhoods are dealing with through Airbnb and other rental things. In the meantime, I've actually spoken with Airbnb, and they have a hotline that residents can call with issues, and I'm happy to share that information with you as well. But I do want to recognize that University Place is working on this, and I would be very supportive of modifying our ordinances to deal with the current situation.
Okay, thank you. Shelley?
Well, my answer is yes, and that I would agree to maybe make some amendments because, mainly because what you're, what we were talking about, some of these Airbnbs that are in the, in, in the neighborhoods, they use them for big parties. And so we could maybe restrict the number of cars, loud music, and, you know, especially in the neighborhoods, because it's been kind of ridiculous.
Okay, thank you, Shelley. This, next question has one-minute answers, and that the entirety of the read here is part of the question. What is your position on TaxDOT projects that will impact District C and residents, and what would you propose to minimize the negative impact on businesses and residents that will be caused by these projects? And to ensure they result in an improved mobility and not increased traffic? And Shelley, you are first.
Well, I'm against TaxDOT and the new I-45 in its current state and what, you know, what they're bringing because of all the number of businesses that we would lose, and I think there's twenty-eight schools that would be within five-hundred feet, and that their quality for the children would be awful. If you happen to have a child with asthma, you'd be going to the emergency room quite often. But it's just, you know, the thing that, you know, we, I think we have to do is stand up as a group and as leaders to, you know, help them to make these changes.
Okay, thank you, Shelley. Abby?
So I'm gonna assume the question is about the I-45 project, and I do want to recognize, I think we have in the audience as well, some of the vocal neighborhood groups like Stop I-45 that are doing a lot of the work. I am opposed to the taking of personal property under eminent domain unless absolutely necessary, and I don't see it necessary with this project. What I am pleased to see is that the mayor has already agreed to work with the neighborhood groups on some proposed redesigns and solutions, and if TaxDOT does not accept those recommendations, then the mayor has said that we will not bring it before city council for a vote. So I do believe that we have the power as a council to continue to keep a check on this project as it moves forward. The reason I say as it moves forward is because TaxDOT is the one in control of a lot of this and does own the land for that. So we have to do everything we can to lift up our neighborhood voices and continue to work on it.
Abby, thank you very much. And you got double bells for that one. And Eric?
All right. We're gonna segue now to another two-minute question, and it sort of builds on the last one. It's, it's related to transit and mobility, and it relates to the MetroNext plan that was just approved in the last election. What steps will you advocate for the city to take to maximize the benefits in District C from that plan, particularly addressing perhaps transit corridors and smart partnering? And let's start with Abby.
So I supported the MetroNext plan, and I think that the bond is critical for our city in terms of improving. We are looking at a federal grant match for the bond, which means that the plan is not going to be permanently in place, and there's gonna be some changes. It's a moving target. So we need to make sure that throughout the process, our neighborhoods are not only informed, but have input. Y'all are the experts. You know what intersections aren't safe, you know what routes work, and we need to make sure that public input is sought throughout the process. I do believe that sidewalks are going to be a critical component of this. If you can't walk to public transportation, then why are we spending all this money on it? And I also think that there's going to be some great things happening in District C, but we need to make sure that they work. For example, Richmond and West Park are going to be potentially BRT, Bus Rapid Transit lanes, and I'm going to push for renewable and sustainable technology used on those buses. Houston needs to lead the way on this issue, and we need to be utilizing the technology that we have to bring forth change for the country.
Okay, thanks. Shelley?
Well, I was also for MetroNext. There's seventy million dollars in there for sidewalks, so we can get, actually be able to walk to the bus lines. And, you know, I, I would like to see all of them have like a covered place where people could make it more easier. No one, no one's gonna use the buses if they have to walk in the weeds, or if they have to stand in the sun or the rain, and there needs to be a bench. And for those people that use it all the time, it's great. And for our District C, the blue line is a complete east-west across our district. It'll, I think it'll work wonderful. And I look forward to being able to ride it to, out to the airport, at least out to Hobby. And so I think it's a great thing, and, you know, we'll, I'll be able to stay involved and make sure we, whatever, whatever CIP plan that we have in the district, we can get the most money we can out of Metro to help us with it.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we're gonna have a couple of policing and security questions. And the first one, it's a long read, so I'm gonna read it. Many neighborhoods, every neighborhood in University Place, are paying for Harris County constables, off-duty HPD officers, or private security companies to protect their homes. This places a burden on citizens already pay taxes to support HPD, Harris County constables, and the sheriff's department. So what measures do you support to increase the number of HPD officers? And Shelley, why don't you go?
Well, we have five cadet classes planned for, for next year, but we also, in the city, like you mentioned, we have constables, we have sheriffs. And if we, if those groups work together, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't have four constables and, and four officers in the same place. I think if they worked together, we would be able to spread out what, with the sheriffs, constables, and police officers, officers, what we have to make it a better use. I also like the idea, if you are a Houston police officer, being able to drive your car home and patrol your neighborhood for thirty minutes when you get there, and patrol it for thirty minutes in the morning before you leave. And because, you know, we have lost the storefronts, and so by at least having a, a police car in your neighborhood, it does deter crime.
Okay.
I'm honored to have the endorsement of the police officers, and the point is that residents should not be paying out of pocket for additional patrols. That's a service that you pay for with your taxes, and I, I love our constable patrol program. I think it's necessary right now, but we shouldn't be paying out of pocket for things like that. I've put a proposal out, back in 2006, voters approved Proposition H, that Mayor White pushed through, and I think we need a continuation of that. It's an exemption for public safety, and that will allow us to bring on more law enforcement officers. We have fewer police officers than we did two decades ago, even though we've added half a million to the population. We also need to ensure that communities of faith and other vulnerable communities are protected and have the resources to protect themselves. Synagogues should not have a budget line for security. We have to recognize what's happening around the country and make sure that individuals, whether it's in the LGBTQ+ community or other communities, have protection, and the city needs to make sure that we have the resources to protect them. In terms of how we communicate between different levels of law enforcement, we need to make sure that the systems themselves are talking to one another. Right now, those systems, but like, for example, the sheriff's office and the constable's office and HPD are on different systems, and that's not working.
Okay, well, actually, I think you've both spoken a little bit about the topic of the next question, so we'll just continue, and I'll, I'll put a point to that, and that is, what specific steps will you push for, for greater coordination of public security services to improve, to improve coverage and response times? And why don't, Abby, you go first.
Yeah, and I, I think you also wanted us to address some of the storefront issues as well.
Right, sure.
So we are losing our storefronts, which I believe is unfortunate, but it is the way that the city is moving. What we have been promised is that without the presence of the storefronts, we will still maintain the same level of presence of law enforcement in our communities. So we need to bird-dog and make sure that that is going to happen. I personally worked in my civic club to get increased patrols for our neighborhood, but we need to make sure that that's happening in all neighborhoods as well. But again, when it comes to the storefronts, we need to make sure that because we don't have that, that there is a presence on the streets and communities that want that.
Okay, thank you. Shelley?
Well, I would like to see 911 also, you know, there's, like we were talking about earlier, there's all these different entities, and we can, they can GPS us, there's like, probably have six apps on your phone that can tell you where you were at any given point. And it would be simple for 911 to have, to be able to, if they coordinated within these groups, it would be easier to have officers somewhere, whether it be a sheriff or a constable or an HPD, if, instead of just giving it to one, just to HPD, because you have other officers in the area. So I'd like to see that redone, and I think that would help us a lot.
Okay.
Just coordination.
All right, thanks. And by the way, I'll just add a little editorial comment. That's one of the things that University Place Association works hard to coordinate those services.
Ready to take you alone as the consultants.
The next question I have to go over with will, is dealing with city finances and budgeting. It's a two, two-minute question each. This will end the questions, so, but they are two minutes apiece. The city suffers chronic budget shortfalls, regular reoccurring setbacks, and following natural disasters that are, I say reoccurring because we can count on an annual flood nearly the last several years around Houston somewhere, and sometimes they are considerable floods. Considering Houston's unabated growth and the demand for safety, infrastructure, and services, how can the city ensure its ability to meet the needs of its residents? What actions will you champion? In your answers, please advocate and vote for repeal. Will you advocate and vote for a repeal of the revenue cap that's currently in place? Secondly, what steps can the city take to better leverage funds from TERS to complete capital improvement projects? And Shelley, you are first for two minutes.
Okay. I'm very interested in seeing how the zero-based budgeting will work. They just recently passed that it starts in January, so I'm really not interested in removing the rev cap until we see what kind of, what happens to all these different departments when we go with zero-based. departments when we go with zero-based budgeting, because I think we're going to have more money than we thought. Uh, the other thing is, the legislature in this past session passed SB2, which also puts a, a revenue cap or revenue restraint on it. I mean, some of the cities were able to, uh, to be removed from that, but we were not. And so it's a 3.5 revenue cap statewide, and Houston is included in that. Uh, so I would like to also see, um, you know, with the, with the TERS and management districts, that, you know, we'd be able just to kind of prioritize what they're doing, or just let them at least rate it, and whether it be for, uh, for economic, if it's for economic development, or if it's for infrastructure, or what they're working on, just so we'll know what's happening and be able to work with them to bring more money in, to get this taken care of.
Okay, thank you, Shelley. Abby?
A repeal of the revenue cap would be up to the voters, but I do believe that the city should come under, um, what other cities are faced in terms of the new state revenue cap, and we should have uniformity there. I think, though, it's important to have a conversation about, um, how we live within our means and what's practical and what we can afford and how we're going to pay for it. Everything that I have proposed throughout the campaign has had a funding source. Um, my opponent has promised to implement Proposition B, which would cost 80 million, has promised to hire 1,500 police officers, combined, that's 290 million dollars. At the same time, that's more than our solid waste department, our libraries, our parks department, our neighborhoods department, and our health department combined. So when we talk about how we're going to fund these things, I think it's really important that we have a plan in place for that and that we're very practical with what the city can and cannot afford.
Okay. Abby, thank you. Eric?
We're coming to the close here?
We are getting our exercise.
Well, that's right, and, uh, we're trying to make this move along so you can get back home and have dinner. So last, to close, to close our evening, we just want you, beyond your closing statement, we also like you to address something that I think is dear to, near and dear, of course, to all the super neighborhoods, which is constituent service and accessibility. So if you could specifically address that in, in two minutes each, um, let's, let's lead off with Shelley.
Well, just while I've been running, um, you know, I've had four different neighborhoods come to me with variances that I helped them work on, and they were, we were able to get them, uh, they out come to what the neighbors wanted. So I think what, the main thing about, I'm from a stellar constituent services, but what that really means also is that I will be there. I will show up. You won't see me just at an occasional meeting. I'll be in your neighborhoods, I'll be there for your civic club meetings, or meeting with your super neighborhood, uh, leaders. And what, what I, what I offer is not just my voice, but your voice. I'll offer a place at the table, not just for me, but for, for anyone that wants to be there. When I walk into a meeting that it has to do with something in your neighborhood, I'm going to bring in, whether we, we have to bring in, have another meeting or whatever, but if they, if I don't know what was happening and I'm there, and it needs to be an expert that's from your neighborhood, I'm going to invite you to be a part of it. Uh, right now, the city doesn't always invite management districts or, unless they're at the last minute when they may need a little extra money. But I, I want you to be a part of the planning, and I'm, I am here to help rebuild this city, and I'm a hands-on leader, and I'll be inclusive for everyone in every neighborhood.
Thank you. And then finally, Abby?
Yeah, so first off, thank you all for coming again to get to know us a little better. I hope you've gotten a sense of who I am and what I stand for. Thank you to our timekeepers. Y'all have the hardest job of anyone.
Yes.
And our moderators. Um, I hope I have been able to show throughout this campaign the type of council member that I will be. We started this campaign doing neighborhood office hours. We didn't want to wait to get to City Hall. I committed to twice a month around the district spotlighting local businesses, providing a space where everyday folks could come and meet with me, share their issues with me, because it's so hard to get down to City Hall, take time off of work, and pay for parking. In addition to neighborhood office hours, as I mentioned, we set up on our website a pet peeves page, and we're responding to those issues and already connecting people to services. My commitment, as I mentioned, is to make sure that everybody in every neighborhood has access to the city, to information, and that their voice is lifted up, whether it's our tackling issues like our alleyways, or protecting our trees, or getting our trash picked up on time, and increasing our recycling program so that it's more effective, efficient, and, uh, bringing in more people into the fold there. So again, my name is Abby Kamen. I would be honored to earn your vote. Thank you again for your time, and I hope everyone gets home safely.
Okay, thanks very much for coming here this evening. Thank you both, and thank you all for attending. And remember, if you don't early vote, December 14th is when you got to go to the polling place.[1741.66][1741.66]